Financials for the week. We have two revenue certifications this week. One is for community development revolving loan fund in the amount of 210,000. And then we also have a revenue certification for the engineers office maintenance and road fund in the amount of 66,108. There are two supplemental appropriations. One is for the mental health for additional contracted services with Rayburn Wood and a supplemental appropriation request for water resources to pay on apartment debt. We have a travel encumbrance for the auditor's office and five travel encumbrances for job and family services, two for trips to Columbus and three for Philadelphia for national conference. Under the vouchers, we have a payment to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $26,600 for the ADP Board for My Community, which is the building department's software for use of tablets. Payment of $62,184.46 to Ryanak paving for engineer for place street resurfacing. A payment of $46,654.71 to John Beer for 5100 N utility tractor for the engineer. Another payment of $260,059.75 to Ryanak paving for resurfacing. A payment of $33,343 to Nochus paving for the Jago County Board of BD for underdrain and asphalt work. And finally, a payment of $29,776 to Nolan Doors for the courthouse doors.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
He knows you changed the physiology. Did you get hold of the other?
We did. We got that corrected.
I was kind of curious about that. It seemed a little awkward.
Yeah, so it was a little awkward. That's right.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we had, have on here to talk about budget hearing. I think I sent you guys an email kind of mocking about what we might do this year for our budget hearings. And what Ann has prepared is a summary of available dates. Slide over here. What Ann's come up here, I think, is like a total of 24 available hours. And this would be starting the budget hearings at the end of September on that Thursday and then going through and having them done by the middle of October, by the 13th. And what I'd sent an email is that we want to allow about 15 minutes at the budget hearing per fund. So if you have a simple department only has one fund, you can do it about 15 minutes. You know, a more complex department, you know, with multiple funds, it's going to take longer because there's more to discuss. And we thought about kind of setting an agenda for each budget hearing to kind of keep it on track and then get them done on a timely basis, that we start talking about what the revenue estimate is, what their expenditure estimate is, where they've asked for things that were not granted to them in the tax budget, any kind of special capital requests that they'd like to make to the commissioners, and then kind of do a SWOT analysis, you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, so you guys have an idea of what's going on in that department that might impact the budget. So I guess all we want to do today is see if these days work for the board and then Ann can start to contact the departments and set up the schedules.
Based on what I'm looking at right now, I don't have a particular problem.
You're available on all those days?
Yep. Good. I can't say I'd be available on all those days yet, but generally speaking, in a time frame.
The only thing on the Thursdays is if we have, if we have something over at solid waste, do we have anything coming up?
We can schedule around it. Because they usually call us to see what your availability is and if we have budget hearings scheduled, we'll make adjustments for that.
And then that for the juvenile detention, that would conflict on a Tuesday afternoon.
Same way that they, they call and ask for your availability and then we kind of judge, juggle and set up around both.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be back too, so that, I, that's fine.
Those days all work. Okay.
I will go ahead and start scheduling with the departments and officials to see who we can get in and like Dave said, we'll try and get kind of a script so together so we can keep it focused on what we need to get through in the time period allotted.
What typically happens in these meetings for benefit of the audience is elected official or office holder comes in or department head comes in and, you know, there's usually some informal conversation because we're kind of breaking the ice. We haven't seen each other a long time in a while, but sometimes that tends to get the schedule slid, you know, to slide a little bit. And what we want to do is try to start these things off and say, okay, we're going to talk about revenue, we're going to talk about expense, then we're going to talk about the other issues and then hopefully we wrap that up and we can talk about other things perhaps, but the idea is to keep us on a nice tight schedule and respect everybody's time.
Based on, you know, suggestion by Ralph to, you know, back out most of in a couple days, that's what we look at.
Yeah. That's pretty good. It was just really spread out before.
Yeah, and again, this is actual timing here is 24 hours. Last year about 18 and a half hours were spent on it, so there's a little bit of extra room in there, things need to change if someone's not available. We've got some extra time built in there.
And getting them done some of the waiters.
Yes, absolutely.
Will be warmed up, ready to go.
Plus working around, you know, being here.
Yep.
Oh, it's really good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the beer. You can get the camera just before the beer sways at you.
Okay, I'm going to report on items that were approved on August 5th and August 8th. Which was authorized by the board on the resolution 16097. On August 5th, I signed off on a service contract for maintenance, Gilmore Security, annual fire panic inspections, deficiency repair allowances for two years, not exceeding $20,000. And I also that day accepted the resignation of full-time summer help Kyle Spear effective July 27th. On August 8th, I accepted for maintenance the resignation of full-time summer help Brian Guineri effective August 12th. For water resources, I accepted retirement resignation of Sam Carmigiano.
Oh, Carmigiano.
I tried to refuse to accept it because I know that's what Commissioner Claypool would have done if he was there, but again, we had to, he's a long time.
He left anyway.
He left anyway, great guy, and sorry to see him go, but happy that he's going to be able to enjoy his retirement. That's effective, he'll be here until November 30th actually. And then for this office, I signed off on an agreement for Charton Community Action Team to use the parking lot during the annual car and motorcycle show coming up on August 14th.
Now the building department. Sorry.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning.
How are you guys doing?
Good.
Hi, Mike, how are you?
Number six is just your payroll authorization question.
All the authorization.
Yeah, that's what number six is. Do you have any questions on that? Building Department is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute revised payroll authorization.
Just a second, I'll make that motion. Sir.
Mr. Smith.
Hi. Mr. Smith. You're on the list though. So how are you guys doing? Good summer?
Warm.
Yeah. Busy though?
Yeah, busy. They have a lot of new starts coming up.
Yeah.
Contractors are liking it, feel like mud.
Yeah, yeah.
Landscapers aren't liking it, no water.
No, I don't. No grass to cut some day.
No grass.
Yeah.
How about you?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Election season seems to be. Got a lot of media.
I don't know.
I'm here this morning, Dan's been working on this project to possibly look at updating the fees and contractor fees. We did it 2013, was the last time we looked at it, and we're just asking the commissioner if he'd be amended looking at that, setting up a public hearing.
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, you're not making a decision, you know, on, on the rate.
We're having a public hearing. We would probably still be 10 times lower than any of the other surrounding communities and so on and so forth, so I think it's appropriate with the, with the changes that are occurring financially in the country.
Now, the one, the one that does have to be acted upon, I believe, is that there's a new category for the electrical and the septic.
With the new septic rules, now the health departments requiring that we do electrical inspections for septic upgrades and also on construction, so we're setting up another line item to accommodate that.
So the board needs to look at at least approving that, even if there were no changes in the fees, that has to, that has to be put into the schedule. But it still requires the same hearing process and everything, so we're just doing it all at one time.
Okay, makes sense.
And that will include two public hearings and then following the second public hearing, you can take action if you choose to make the adjustment and then once adoption is done, it takes 31 days before those new rates come into effect. So that's not much.
How many?
Thirty-one.
Okay.
Do I have a copy of the new rates?
Yeah.
Computer crashed, so I haven't seen it.
Paper copy.
I went online and it was, I mean, it was considerably still less than what parts around these cities and towns.
Yeah, we're looking to adjust a couple of factors too. A lot, a lot of times we have a base electrical fee, but if there's storm damage and pulls down someone's power, you wake up in the morning, last thing you want to do is come all the way to the building department here and get a permit to get your power turnbacked on, so we're looking for an emergency rate that helps that person out a little bit instead of, you know, full commit price for just cover our costs to get out there and do inspection for them.
Yep.
So we're looking at a couple of things like that, but also adjust to help our residence centers as well.
It's a pretty nominal increase if you're going to have to save.
I think that's been up 7% for residential and I think it was like 15 or so percent for commercial, which still takes us, keeps us pretty low compared to surrounding counties and different areas.
What's a flood determination program?
Every, every detached structure has to be checked to make sure it's not within 100-year flood area, so, or substantially improved property, which is 50% more than your value, you have to check it to make sure it's not in flood area otherwise then they have to get mandatory flood insurance or you have to build it to a different standard. So you can't build a basement in a flood area, you have to elevate it, well, base flood elevation, there's a lot of coastal regulations regarding that. Matter of fact, Lake Erie has now become a coastal area that's going to be treated the same as North Carolina, Gulf Coast, so all the area along Lake Erie is going to be considered a D-zone instead of a C-zone. It's probably.
A D-zone?
B-zone, B-zone velocity, so.
Oh, yeah, we got a lot of hurricanes around. I mean, let's, let's just make one broad bush, you know, set of rules for the entire United States, make our dishes waterways, makes perfect sense. Yeah.
Is that measured in feet?
We need more government. We need more government, both hell or she.
What was your question, Nina?
Was it going to be in feet or miles, the zone? Feet? Just a little bit, like 100 yards or something, or a mile?
Oh, no, no, it's just a long area. Basically, erosion is what they're looking at.
Okay.
That is a problem. I mean, there's, you know, some of those areas in, you know, Madison and Fairport, you can see some of those houses, they're teetering to almost go, you know, ruin.
Yeah, and it's really going to be tricky over in the northwest area of the state. It's pretty much flat anyhow, so to take all the calculations into consideration, there's going to be a lot of people in flood zones that think they were in it before.
So the actual zoning state is based on the elevation difference between the surface of the water and how far inland it's pretty flat?
Yeah, they do engineering studies with computerization and determine, you know, how far in the water hole it jacks, so then they set a line there and then anything on this side, flood area, anything up on that line, without it.
You know why we lost our beaches?
Beaches?
Yeah, do you know why we lost? We used to have beaches all along Lake Erie. When I was growing up, we used to go down the beach all the time. Do you know why we lost our beaches? It's because the sand is a fluid and it flows around the lake and so as the lake was washing, it constantly was moving the sand. We put in the breaker walls to save property or to control, you know, put your boat out there and all that kind of stuff. It interfered with the flow of the sand along Lake Erie, so then the sands disappeared because they couldn't flow, it couldn't flow along the lake and started eroding the beaches. Now, Injunee, Madison, I grew up in Injunee, but in that whole area, you see the houses which used to have, you know, 100 feet of property up front of them, the property got eaten away, now they're teetering on the edge, falling to the beach. Because we were so smart, we knew what we were doing, that's the reason I listened to all this nonsense and I think, yeah, we're so smart, we know what we're doing with this stuff. It's just kind of laying us in the butt. We're not that smart with this stuff. But, go ahead.
The building department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold public hearings pertaining to the updating, to updating the permit fee schedule and contractor registration and licensing fees to be held on Tuesday, August 16, 2016, at 9:15 a.m. and Tuesday, August 23, 2016, at 9:15 a.m. Notice of these public hearings will be advertised on August 11, 2016, August 18, 2016, and on the county website.
Make that motion. Second.
Mr. Smith.
Hi. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Have a good day.
We have to skip to item number 12. We have a public hearing tomorrow. Sorry.
So close.
Sorry. Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Nice day. Okay, I need a motion, do we have a reading of the notice?
Some.
Well, anytime we make a change in a grant, we have to bring it before the board and
because we had to change what we said our, initially said our outcomes would be on two projects, we're not going to be able to do as much as we said, we have to notify the public that we're doing the less than what we said we were going to do. So that's the, the reason behind this public hearing is to notify the public.
And for the public record, you and I talked about this yesterday, the reason we're doing the less is not because we're choosing to do less, it's because the estimates came in higher and therefore we couldn't, using the amount of available money, we couldn't do as much as we want to do because the estimates across the board were coming in higher.
Were a lot higher, a very lot higher.
So listen to your choice.
Kind of what we were talking about this morning, that, you know, just in general, you know, a lot of work is, prices are going up just because there's a shortage of labor in some cases.
I think especially trades, there's a definite, anybody trying to schedule a plumber, hello, that's me, it's incredibly difficult. But we actually had an architect quote initially last year what he thought the job was going to be and it still was insane how much.
And this came up yesterday, I guess I'll, I'll bring it up, I was going to talk more about this to them off record, but there's something I'm concerned about and that is when you enter periods where the contractors are really busy, they will bid high thinking, well, if I get the job fine, if not, and then fine. And so we've got X amount of dollars that are allocated to these particular projects and I don't know, and I was talking to Anita about this yesterday, we've got anybody looking over the shoulder of these things for reasonables. And so we get high estimates because these guys are so busy that they can afford to bid high. Is it smart for us, using taxpayer dollars, to move forward on a particular project or is it smarter to set that aside and say, wait a minute, this is a timing thing, let's wait for these guys to be, starve them to death and then we'll get a better deal for the taxpayers on these kind of things. And so I'm just not so sure in some cases, and I don't know how to approach it or how to even think about it, because we did this with the roads and in some cases, the road contractors who are real busy right now are bidding really high on these projects, well the taxpayer get, are getting stuck with this whole thing because we're paying a lot of money and in this case, we're paying $30,000 for a door, put it in, push button on these stupid ADD doors that are going in.
Well, I see. Yeah. That, that, that actually, we're, we're actually moving walls and everything on the airport project, that's coming around $30,000 to put in the ADD festival and everything, so that, you know, if it comes in a little bit higher, the airports also has their fund to kick in, they're going to do their in-time portion as well. In this cases, in both of these cases, whether it's a legal bid or an RFP, you know, if the money's not there, we can't do the project. So we're not going to take some contractor's bid that is 50% over the estimate, we can't. The money's just not there. So in that case, then we would have to turn the project down and maybe try for next year and try it again, it just depends on, you know, who applies for the grant and what projects are picked. So we would never pay 50% more than the estimate.
Starve it and, yeah.
You're talking about the architect's estimate?
Yeah.
That's what we initially went with, with the architect's estimate, which, you know.
I don't know what the safeguards are in the system, it's just not something I've been paying, was paying that much attention to.
There is, I mean, from what you're talking about, what you hope is that you can go to bid in January and, and you can get everything cleared and you're ready to go. What is like really hard to do that by the time you get your specs written by the architect because it always takes them longer than they think and then they have to be approved through the building and, you know, health department stamped off and, and ready to go and then you go to bid and then it's about four weeks by the time you go through the whole public bid process, two more weeks to get under contract and get into session, you know, you're in June and that's prime season. So it's really rough even because you don't get your grant signed until January, so which is the official time you can start doing anything with it, if there's anything before that, you're in violation. So we're, you're like forced to be in the prime time and then the grant expires in December. So either you hedge your bets and you figure you're going to wait and do this in late fall when there might be more contractors and then you got to hope you finish on time because you have to finish by the end of December. So, yeah, it's like a catch-21, we're sort of not working out so well. But this is the first year we've noticed this disconnect. It seems to have been going higher, but never like this. This is an anomaly, this, this year has been really bizarre. So either we lost a lot of our tradespersons and a lot of things are happening, you know, we had so many tradespersons in 2006 and '07, everybody was a contractor and everybody, then everybody you want in the pawn shop and there was nothing but contractors' stuff in there. Oh my God, nail guns.
I love going to the pawn shop.
Like they couldn't even put them all up.
There's novelty there.
So we lost a lot of tradespeople. Now, it's some things are happening and, and there's not enough of them to go around. They'll probably be healed by next year, you know, it's just a delay in supply and demand, but, you know, if we try to fix it and then next year it fixes itself, so I don't know how.
I don't know what the answer may be, just to.
I don't know either.
I was looking at this and I was, because of some of the other projects that are going on and watching the dynamics behind it, I'm thinking to myself, who's looking out for the taxpayer in this situation? Yeah, we want to get these things done and they're appropriate to get done, but we don't want to buy a $200 toilet seat. You know, we don't want to buy a $1,000 hammer, we want to make sure that we're being responsible with taxpayer dollars and who's watching out for that?
Well, the other thing to keep in mind is, and I'm not saying this, but people are paying their help more money than they ever have. I mean, even this next company we're talking about, they, when they were hiring welders, they were trying to get them at $14 an hour, they gave up on trying to do that, they're going right at 25 because you can't get anybody.
Yeah, welders is tough, if you need a job out there, you know, they go to welder.
But it's like any tradesperson, you are going to have to pay more because you got to get them to show up every day. So I think a lot of what the extra costs are is because they're labor costs that have increased so much, but, you know, that, that's my take on it, but you can't keep people.
And then, and then wait, wait until they start driving up the minimum wage to ridiculous rates.
Yeah, because it's going to regulate it.
Everything's going to ratchet up and everybody will be right where they were before.
By the time you say, oh, we need to pay them more, but the market will take care of them. Market will always.
If you allow the market to do it.
Right, but it, it will eventually overcome everything, but, well, anyhow, I, I think it's an anomaly, I think this will work itself out and next year we'll be back on, because once guys see that they can be a contractor again, they're going to get back in and everybody wants to be their own boss, I mean, they'll, you got those freewheelers out there who have a pickup and they're going to start. We just, this just takes time.
God bless them. All right, sorry, sorry for the tangent, I just thought it would be something interesting for people to hear, you know, we're not just rubber stamping these things, we actually think through some of these things and talk about them, so.
So, do we have any other questions or comments? Anybody from public have comment? Okay, then we will close the public hearing at, uh. We're going to jump to number 13, is that one? You do number 13 and then go back to 11. The opposite community economic development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute a letter to Mike Tyler, office chief of the High Development Services Agency, opposite community development, requesting amendment number one to grant E of 1513-1.
And this just goes with the amendment, it's a whole lot of necessity to amend to decrease our outcomes of the two projects.
And what they'll do is that we'll be back again with a form that they're going to have us sign to officially amend the contract.
So we're not, we're not reducing the amount of money, we're just reducing what we can do with the money.
The actual outcome, yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Do you want to skip or do you want?
Yeah, to go back to 11 and that way you guys are done, so.
Oh, okay, oh, all right, so, so that means it's the letter of commitment?
Yes.
Okay, all right, this is, after a lot of travail with EEI, if you remember, EEI or PNG was the grant application we sent to the state and, we give up. We just, you know, it's just, I just want to bang my head. The one guy said, did Sparky get you down? Yeah, it's just too hard working with, do I sound old? They're right out of college and they know so much, they just like pick apart everything. We have the application in there since June and like once a week, they come up with something new that they want to understand or, oh gosh, it's, it's been interesting. Well, anyhow, so we threw them to hell, but we would have all, we only threw them to hell because we're going to get some funds back in, some early payouts, so yay, it caught us off the hook and we're going to do this in-house. So this is to help EEI, which you've heard this around, they're moving back to the very top of the block. So that we're asking for, to approve a loan, or to begin the loan process, this is just the letter of commitment, to begin the preparation of legal documents, to make a loan of 470,000, so it's less than the 500 we initially, SBA's coming with a little more money, so 470,000 and 3% for 20 years, for the purchase of land, which is the only thing we can go on because if we go on the building, it triggers prevailing wage. So we're going to just buy, we have, at the closing, then they have SBA money and they have Erie Bank as the other one.
So the amount was 75,000 or?
No, this is the other one.
470.
470.
470.
Yeah.
Initially, it was two separate, it was.
Two separate loans.
RLF and local.
And we, we got rid of the two and we're just creating one, first of all, 470.
So we see 75 here, that's only.
Because there was one coming in to your revolving loan.
Well, because we. Well, because we, we didn't get the, we didn't know about this other payoff that was coming in.
This was the original way that they sent.
Tried to piece it together.
There was two separate, they had, and then she sent this one over yesterday, which is the four seventy.
Constantly going, hitting, moving targets.
You know, it was just. And when we finally, seventy-five, ran out of time.
And there was the RLF of three fifty, and they combined them together under the law. This is the original paperwork.
You want certainty and predictability, you're in the wrong.
It's not technically to buy, because then they have the four seventy, but when that extra money came in.
Well, right, because you counted.
We could leave the local loan fund alone and just go straight with the, the regular CDBG revolving loan fund. I'd like to be real careful.
Now, I do have one question, because you said something about you can't go with the building because.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, this says in here, if I double check it, it does say construction of the building on the property.
We're talking about the project in that respect.
Yeah, that's the total project.
Okay, just making sure that we don't need to make any changes to that as well.
No, and that's just the initial document, what you'll see when you have the legal, the real legal documents. It spells out what we're going to do.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute the letter of commitment to P and G Capital LLC EEI Acquisition Corp. Engineer Endeavors Incorporated for the CDBG revolving loan fund loan for the purchase of land, machinery, and equipment and construction of building on the property located at one fifty-one seventy-five Kingswood Road, Burton Township, in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for twenty years, at three percent interest.
So.
Second. Could you just, like?
Hi.
All right, we'll be back with this shortly. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Now it's.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I tried to.
Process.
I sometimes try to get as much in, hardly do a public hearing as possible, and sometimes it doesn't work that way.
Well, we've been working on this, uh, dis-easement acquisition for quite some time with the city of Akron, built a relationship with them over, which is quite good, and in their public entity, they have signed their portion of the signature. And which we have to copy out, and once we sign, they will forward their original copies. So we'll record this as a, we'll make a trial. And, uh, it's a little, it's a little different, but in a public entity, in a public entity, it's kind of how things have worked for this one, and, uh, that's the agreement that is being made. Requesting that commissioners can act on this and put it behind us.
Okay.
The county engineers offices requesting the board accept and execute the easement for highway purposes between the Juggah County Commissioner and the city of Akron and political subdivision of the state of Ohio, for parcel number zero four dash zero two seven four zero zero, for safety and true fitness, to Kama Road, CH thirty-four, section A, Burton Township, in the amount of five hundred dollars.
So.
Could you just, like?
Hi.
Could you just click?
Thank you.
All right, make sure Andy, bye-bye now.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. How did your, uh, how did that, that grant thing go, did that work out at all?
Which one?
The one I had emailed you?
I think that was.
Oh, that's right.
We're asking, um, we acknowledge the three new staff that we have. Um, our first one, they're all replacement staff. Uh, the first one is Lauren Wells, she, um, has been hired as a social service worker one. She has a bachelor's degree in social work from Cleveland State University. She interned with us for a year, um, in the children's services department. We have Alexandra Eastburn, uh, as a social service worker two. She also has a bachelor's in social work from Cleveland State, um, and she interned at the Cuyahoga County Children's Services Program. She was also a camp counselor for young teenagers, um, at Camp Marengo. Um, and we have a third person, Ola Girardi, um, as a social service worker one. Uh, she has a bachelor's of psychology degree, also from Cleveland State. She interned, um, here at the Juggah County Prosecutor's Office. So we're excited to have them.
The Department of Juggah Family Services is requesting the board acknowledge the filing of higher requirements of the Director of Juggah Family Services. The Juggah Family Services has applied for the Commissioner's recruitment and hiring procedures. Lauren Wells, Social Service Worker One, replacement effective May twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. Alexandra Eastburn, Social Service Worker Two, replacement effective May twenty-third, two thousand sixteen. And Ola Girardi, Social Service Worker One, replacement effective June sixth, two thousand sixteen.
So.
Could you just, like?
Hi.
Could you just?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good day.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Good morning. So, uh, you solved the bat problem with the prosecutor's office?
That problem, taken care of.
It was only one bat?
One bat, we relocated it.
Relocated it?
Yes. But fly back again.
Was it Indiana bat?
I mean.
Was it Indiana bat?
I didn't check.
Didn't check the ID?
There only was one bat this morning.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're checking that every morning, because they can crawl through, just not anything like a mouse, so.
I got a call, I, I was, I just left work, and, um, was concerned there was a bat flying around, there was a worker there. And I said, well, I'm, I'm at Walmart, I can go back to the sporting goods store, get a Batman racket, and come out there and take care of it. But, uh, they were able to wait till morning and reach it.
They're virtually impossible to catch when they're flying, so.
Well, the high ceiling, you are.
Yeah, wait till morning, you know, go away.
Yeah.
If you want to relocate, put it in a cage and bring it over to my place, I have big rats. Go ahead.
Uh, the main district, excuse me, is requesting that, uh, promotion of Hannah Gordon to full-time, uh, office coordinator, excuse me, be effective August fifteenth, at a rate of thirteen fifty-seven per hour, a one-year probation period. So.
Second. Could you just, like?
Hi.
Could you just?
Very much.
Bye-bye now.
Transit department, Michael? Just came back from New York City? Oh, mass transit is live and well there. There are more empty buses running around wasting taxpayer dollars than we have ever seen in.
It sounds like your focus should be on New York City.
Yeah.
And then work all the way down to us, and by that time, uh, my grandkids might have.
They rode these crazy subways, but I'm a little.
Yeah, so there's a lot, uh, you know, the people need that service.
They do?
Yes, the people need that service.
They do?
The valuable service for the, for the people of our country.
They do? Is that a need?
It's.
It's a conversation for a different topic. Go ahead, you're on.
Uh, hiring a part-time driver, Ray Brockmeyer, position of part-timer, uh, effective the fifteenth, eighteen fifty-seven. This is the continual, last two of the three revolving door folks we got, in the hope that this person sticks. He's a retired auto worker, uh, did thirty-something years at Chrysler's campaign, and, uh, is looking for something to, uh, supplement, something come, something to do, this one stand-along kind of guy. Hopefully, we'll be successful with that. So.
Tell your next people, tell them more, first, to mention, be effective.
The Transit Department is requesting the board to hiring Ray Bond, triggered to the position of part-time transit driver number twenty-two ten dash one, to be effective, effective August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, at the rate of thirteen dollars fifty-seven cents per hour, with a one-year probationary agreement.
Second.
Could you just, like?
Hi. Very good. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
I was going to say something about cabins of subway, maybe we'll start, uh.
We'll start the trenching process as we.
Ah, there you go.
Commissioners offices requesting the board grant permission to advertise for application in public depository to accept applications from eligible institutions to be a public depository for the county of Juggah. Notice that this application of public depository will be advertised on August eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen.
So.
Could you just, like?
Hi.
Could you just?
What is a public depository?
Those are the banks that are designated by the board that the county can place the money into, and there's a maximum amount that each bank is going to be designated to hold with an aggregate, uh, maximum of seventy-five million.
Cool, thanks. Second.
No.
Hi.
Thank you. We do this every four years.
Hey, so, so, can you do this?
This is only the beginning of the process.
I'm in a mood today, I can't help it, it's, I'll start with that little puppy dog running down the road. Okay, they have a motion to, uh, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.